Hello everybody, Graham Davies here from the BCCJ. Welcome to our end of year BCCJ Town Hall. It's great to have you here. But we thought it was worthwhile to get together and to sort of talk a little bit about not just the impact that COVID has had on everybody in the Chamber and what we've done over this year, but also to remind ourselves of some of the longer term projects that the Chamber's working on, the task forces that we've got around diversity and inclusion, technology and responsible business, and also a chance to reflect on what we might do in the year ahead, although planning for the year ahead when it seems the end to COVID is getting ever further away is very difficult, but we'll be here and we will be carrying on doing things. So we'd like to hear your ideas as well as give you our ideas of what next year might look like. If I could just indulge myself though with one event that I'd like to bring your attention to, it's an event on biodiversity that we're hosting on January the 14th. I think this is going to be a complete agenda setter. We put together a really brilliant panel of top speakers with the aid of our colleagues at Refinitiv and the British Embassy. We've got the lady who's in charge of the UK delegation on biodiversity talking to us from the UK. And we've got top level speakers from WWF Japan, HSBC, Refinitiv and other invitations out there. Really does promise to be a really good event. That's on January the 14th and please, please do try and make a space in your diary to attend that for us. Anyway, to tonight's event and reflecting on the year past and thinking about the year ahead, I think first we're going to run a video which Sam in the BCCJ office has prepared. So Sam, let's have the video.
2020 was always going to be this big year. It just turned out to be so in a way that none of us really expected. Just want to take a step back and decipher what we've all been through by constantly jumping through moving hoops. We've all learned a lot and as 2020 draws to a close, I think it pays to look back at how we move with the times and why it's so important to ask questions, not just of ourselves, but of everything that's happening around us. I want to take you back to this photo, our Shenzhen 2020 on January 26th. Little did we know at the time that this would be our largest in-person gathering of the year. Sharing a campi to a year that was supposed to be centered around the Olympics and Paralympic Games. The event was a coming together of friends and colleagues and the start of a new agenda around building bridges and enhancing an already special relationship between the UK and Japan. The gears were already in motion for the Power Alliance, building on the Rugby Alliance in the previous year. We had an exciting international Women's Day agenda and our purpose was as clear as ever. Inform and connect, give opportunities context and bring them closer to members. Engage our community with one another as that's when the magic really happens. And we were in a pretty good place with a steadily growing membership and a healthy relationship with key partners who shared similar values to us. And then, well, this happened.
The mystery virus started here in the city of Wuhan. Chinese authorities pinpointing its source to this food market. Dozens have been infected.
The Chinese President Xi Jinping says his country is waging a serious fight against the demon coronavirus outbreak. Japan is to send a plane to Wuhan and the US plans to fly consular staff and US citizens out of the country.
The Diamond Princess is the single largest cluster of coronavirus outside China.
We now have a name and it is COVID-19.
Japan's Prime Minister Shinzo Abe, he has announced that public schools will be closed from next Monday.
Coronavirus has overtaken the 2003 SARS epidemic.
Or could accelerate into a full blown global pandemic.
We're looking at declines across the board.
There is fear in this market, there's no other way to say it.
At the open, shares plummeted to levels so low it triggered the stock exchange to automatically shut down.
In the last few hours, Japan has asked for the Olympic Games to be postponed.
I've developed mild symptoms of the coronavirus.
The Chancellor has announced a multi-billion pound support package.
With a concerning surge in the number of coronavirus cases in Japan, the Japanese Prime Minister Shinzo Abe on Tuesday declared a month long state of emergency.
And you get the picture, it's too close to Christmas to run a full montage, but in short, it soon became clear that we wouldn't be calling the shots, this pandemic would. And so to get to work, on March 12th, we decided to postpone in-person events. By March 16th, we'd hosted our first online webinar and the same week the COVID-19 Resource Centre was born, very much a centerpiece of the Chamber website for the coming months. We soon found success in moving to an online format, reaching more members and communicating across borders. The Resource Centre expanded to offer video content, survey, podcasts, member deals and services, travel advice, Japanese government advice and a place to acknowledge member resilience. As time passed, we reignited the Power Alliance, bringing President of the International Paralympics Committee, Andrew Parsons. We invited Graham Zebidy to speak on the UK-Japan trade agreements and put the BBA back on the calendar. And it was also great to see other projects like the Responsible Business Forum and Travel and Tourism Think Tank bring people together and inspire new conversations. Of course, there were still COVID issues which kept popping up, namely subsidies and that travel ban. Yep, that one. And while each challenge came with its own set of considerations, it was great to see support and the sense of togetherness come through. And while there's hope on the horizon as far as vaccines are concerned, we are now looking at a very different Japan than the one we saw a year ago. Remote working has now been tried, tested and proven and in many cases embraced, backed by organizations like KEDAN REN, who think it should become part of permanent policies. This could mean fantastic things for curbing the declining birth rate, keeping women in the workforce, inspiring and encouraging digital innovations. For three months in a row, residents are now leaving the cities faster than they are coming in. You hear stories like Persona relocating their HQ to Awaji Island. Such a move could have huge potential in supporting regional revitalization. As a Chamber, these are the kind of questions we need to keep asking. And while this year has been more about searching for answers, we can take confidence that some change might not be such an alien concept as seemed. And we encourage members to ask questions of us too. That's when conversations spark and change begins to happen. I'm probably going a bit over time with this video, but I hope that gives you a little insight into our thinking and actions. And we encourage anyone who wants to talk to get in contact with us, info@bccjapan.com. Thank you and we look forward to working with you next year.
What a great video. Thanks, Sam. That really made me reflect and you know, I've observed all of this kind of from my living room, but there was so much disruption and so many challenges and so many changes that everybody's made. Fantastic. Let's now hear from our President David Bickel with his views on 2020, the Chamber and 2021. David?
Thanks Graham and can I just add my thanks as well to Sam for that fantastic and very entertaining summary of the past 12 months. I'm delighted that, well, welcome to everybody here today, to all our members and friends and stakeholders. It's great to have you joining us. Often when I have a chance to address our membership, I do like to begin by talking about our purpose, which hopefully everybody understands is that our members make great connections with people that matter, people that matter to them in their business. In terms of how we do that, of course, we do that through the good offices and the matchmaking of our team at the BCCJ office, but importantly, of course, through the events platform that we have here at the BCCJ. The way that we try and deal with the pandemic, obviously with the pandemic, it's had a big impact on what we can do in terms of events. It's meant we've had to go into the virtual environment, as Sam has said, but we still try and differentiate ourselves, I think, by being agile and bringing you important information quickly and also by having what we like to think and we thank Sam for this, for having superior production quality. You know, I was, Sam picked out a few of the key highlights there from the digital event platform over the last several months. I think it all began with our first event and I'm delighted, I think we were the first foreign Chamber of Commerce to do an online event back on the 17th of March, which we hosted from the office, you know, with our key partners at Robert Walters and GSK moderated by Heather, who's here with us today as well, which is all about the leadership challenge and COVID. And I think, you know, beyond that, we also had an unexpected change in the Prime Minister when Prime Minister Abe decided to step down abruptly, which heralded the, you know, what was going to be a new premiership and we found out it was going to be Prime Minister Suga. But we were delighted then to give our members an opportunity to listen to Prime Minister Abe's biographer Tobias Harris and gain some insights into not only perhaps, you know, Abi San's view on the handover, but what to expect from the new Suga administration. And I think, you know, I like to think we were prompt in giving our members access to those insights, the contacts we've got at the Chamber. Another one was the BBA that Sam talked about in the video just now. To be honest, we really wrestled with what to do with the BBA this year. You know, as we'll know now, it was the 13th year of running this. The BBA has always been not just about the, you know, a chance to, you know, put on a black tie and go for a gala dinner with 350, 400 other people. It's always been about the members and providing a platform for the great stories and the great efforts of companies working in the UK-Japan business ecosystem. But it was a real challenge to know what the right thing to do was this year. In the end, we know it's been a tough year for everybody, so we wanted to do something and we decided to take the event online, but we really didn't want to, you know, badger anyone or ask anyone for sponsorship or place a burden on people. I have to say though, as, you know, preparations progressed, it was absolutely amazing to see how a number of, you know, members and friends of the Chamber just decided to step up with no personal ask for themselves, but really wanting to give something to the cause to help us actually deliver that event. Absolutely key to all that was Kate Thompson, the sculptor who every year produces or in, I think 10 out of the last 13 years has produced the trophies. And she stepped up immediately and just talked about how much she wanted to be part of this event and how she wanted winners to be able to have the same trophies and basically donated her time, talent and skills and pretty much, I think, about a month of her time to produce all of the stone trophies that we give out. Robert Walters stepped up again as well with giving us some financial support to enable us to make the event more professional. And we had companies as well, like Louis Pomery, who gave, you know, sparkling English wine to all the nominees who really just wanted to get involved. And I have to say, it's been quite humbling. I'm really, really positive to see how people have made a commitment to, you know, do something for the Chamber. So that also goes, I think, for everyone who's here today. The BCCJ is all about the members. Without the participation and the input from the members, there effectively is no Chamber. So I know it's been a very tough year over the last, the last several months since the COVID, the pandemic began back in January, February. We're absolutely delighted to everyone though, for sticking with the Chamber, for signing up as members this year, for being a participant at our events, particularly for being here this evening as well. So I would strongly encourage everybody to continue to participate in the events. We do have a fantastic lineup of events going forward next year. I'm delighted you'll hear more about some of these from our task force leads who are here with us this evening. And please do continue to participate and stick with us next year throughout 2021 as a member of the British Chamber of Commerce in Japan. On that point, Graham, I'd like to hand it back over to you to give a bit of airtime to the leaders of our three task forces as well, please.
Thanks David. And you, over the last couple of years, have put in place the task forces to reflect the priorities of the Chamber. And it's good that we've got people from each of the task forces to talk to us today. I'm starting to start with Sven from the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. And Sven, I think you've got some exciting plans for next year. Do you want to tell us about those, please?
Sure, sure. So I think it's fair to say that this year has been full of challenges and I think diversity and inclusion is a key topic to be thinking about when it's really thrown a lot of the, what we've, what we think of as normal into question. So I think it's, I think it's still something that a lot of us are facing with what does, what does all of this mean for work-life balance, what it means for the role of working at home and, and it actually has brought us a lot of good for diversity because it means that people can form their lives a little bit more. And the reason I mention this is the more we are thinking about this topic and diversity and inclusion is by default diverse and it's inclusive. And so it is very broad and captures just so many different, complicated, connected, but also very separate topics. And as we turn towards next year, we thought it's really time to take stock on the topic and figure out a strategy that we can really have impact within the BCCJ community, but also the greater community that we all participate in, which is Japan. And we felt in order to set an agenda, particularly when we think that here we are, speaking in English and most of us are actually foreigners here in Japan, we naturally think of things a little bit disconnected from Japan in general. And so we felt it was important to take a moment and figure out a little bit what diversity and inclusion really means to Japan. And so we can also figure out what we should be saying about the topic in regards to that because there's no point in starting the conversation when you don't have anyone, it doesn't connect to anything on the other side. And the way we wanted to approach it in the coming year, and I think we are all very excited about is going to launch a nationwide survey to get a little bit, a little bit under the skin of how Japan relates to these topics, which topics are particular importance right now, where maybe Japan is even ahead of the curve. I mean, there might be some topics that we are unaware of because we, in our bubble, make assumptions that might not be true. And through that, then sort of basically overlap that with the interests of the BCCJ community and through that then start figuring out what kind of people should we be bringing together, what kind of events should we be putting on, what kind of white papers, what kind of conversations we should be doing. And this of course is quite a large undertaking. We will be doing it together with the British Council, who are helping us with framing many of the questions with their international experience on it, but maybe even working together with the Keizai Douyukai, fingers crossed. That's, that's of course a tough one to handle, but I'm sure we can manage. And yeah, so, so we will be in touch with over email in the coming week to share a little bit more information and ask for also for sponsorship because these things sadly cannot be done for free. And apart from that, of course, we're also still working on other topics where we're working on putting on an event around cognitive bias. We want to do a little bit more about harassment policy in the workplace. And one topic that we were still very much discussing is diversity, inclusion and innovation because I think so much of it is, it's about business and about trying to figure out how we can bring this in as a meaningful driver for new business ideas. So that's really what the plan looks like for next year.
Great, thanks. And just give us a sense of the timing of the survey and when people can expect to hear about it and, you know, what they need to do to respond if they're interested in taking part or helping.
So I, we are right now trying to put together a little outline of what the sponsorship would look like at different price points and what also sponsorship can get you. And then once we have guaranteed, we've, we've guaranteed, secured the funding, we would immediately start working on it and we, there will be different phases of it. So there will be the initial phase, which will just be a quantitative survey, which will then be turned into material that we'll be sharing. And of course, with Sam being the guru of all forms of communication, I'm sure he will be a great help. Scratching his head there, you're part of this. And, and then after that, we will also go through more interviews. So I hope that we can bring this to a close around, gosh, I'm now thinking so much in Japanese, fourth month, which I believe is January 3rd, we might, it's April, yes, April. And then hopefully we can then kick off the new year a little late, but better late than ever.
But people can expect to hear about this in the 12th month, which is December.
Correct.
Okay. And I want to ask Tova from the Responsible Business Group or Responsible Business Task Force. What's happened this year, Tova, in Responsible Business? It seems to me a lot of people are taking stock of business in the COVID climate. Have you noticed a change in that? And what does it mean for your task force?
It certainly has been a time of taking stock, I think, in so many ways. And I think the concern at the beginning of all this was that, you know, rightly so, the focus was on COVID and on health and safety around that. And people were very concerned about, you know, the impact of that on our lives. But we did an event actually fairly early on in the BCCJ where, you know, we sat down and spoke, I believe Heather and I with you about, you know, what this meant for the Responsible Business agenda. And the responses we're seeing from companies, both within the BCCJ network, but more broadly globally as well, really seem to indicate that this has accelerated people's commitment to, you know, we're hearing the phrase build back better the whole time. You know, we've realized that this is an opportunity. It's, it's of course, an incredible tragedy that what is happening around the world, but it's also an opportunity to, to press the pause button and say, okay, so, you know, here we are, how can we be more responsible as businesses in the way that we're working with people, with our communities, with our own, you know, internal stakeholders at companies outside that as well, the environment as well, with, you know, more and more people teleworking, that that sort of changed that conversation as well. So I think it's being, it's moving, you know, from that panic phase of pressed hold on everything to, okay, you know, really what can we do moving forward? And so with the task force, we are now looking at, well, we've got the biodiversity event that you mentioned, that's in my background at the moment here. You know, talking about topics like that, which are incredibly important. We did a part one of the decarbonization forum, looking at the impact of that on business earlier this year. And interestingly, that was just before Sugasan announced that, you know, Japan is going to be aiming at net zero by 2050. So we sort of preempted that, which was really good to see. And then we've got part two of that, which will be early in the new year coming up. So we're making sure that we're giving the membership an opportunity to, to hear from experts, but to also be part of the discussion. And we sort of, I think everyone's felt the whole Zoom fatigue thing this year and sort of, there've been so many online events and we're very conscious of that. So we're, we're trying very hard to innovate as well with the type of events we're doing, making sure we're giving people a chance to, to actually interact with each other from the, the membership to learn from each other about what they're doing around various aspects of responsible business. And I think this, that's such a valuable resource. It's such a huge topic. There are, there are so many, you know, different directions we could take with this and, and it's new ground as well for so many companies, so many industries. I think to have this resource of the BCCJ network and our wider stakeholders and to be able to bring those people together and say, okay, well, let's look at biodiversity as a topic, what's going on out there, what is the situation, what does this mean for business in general or certain industries, what should we be doing, you know, what's the best practice? It's an amazing opportunity, I think, to, to learn from each other and to really, you know, push the bar higher. So again, as to echo, sorry, to echo Sven, please get in touch, anybody, if you've got, you know, topics you would like us to cover here.
Yep, thanks Tova. Please get in touch and please, if you've got questions or comments for Sven, Tova, and we're going to hear from Richard in a second. Use the chat function and we can talk about these things now. We've got a little bit of time. Tova, just one thing that struck me about next year is, is going to be a lot of government action around all of these topics around a responsible business. And UK has got G7 and also we've got the COP meeting. So the UK government has got big ambitions, I think, to show global leadership. I think it's important that we feed that back and create a viable link between government and business. Is that something that the Responsible Business Task Force is going to be looking at as well?
Absolutely. So I mean, already, you know, looking at the biodiversity event that's happening in January, we've got speakers from, you know, Japan government side, from the UK government side. And that's something we'd like to, to continue going forward. So we've got, you know, different angles on these topics. And we're also, as you mentioned, bringing in, you know, WWF and hopefully another organization as well. So we're getting the different perspectives, which I think really helps everybody's understanding and strengthens, you know, potential collaboration.
Yeah, it's a powerful platform, I hope. MBOs, NGOs, very important stakeholders in that. If I can move on though, because we've got a lot to get through, I'd like to bring Richard Thornley in from the Digitech Task Force. Richard, highlights from 2020, we're still in 2020, and what's going to happen in 2021?
Yes, thank you Graham. Good to see the sun shining in beautiful Yakuushima. I'd just like to mention a few of the highlights. First, congratulations again to Bisu for winning the Digitech Innovation Award at the BBA, fighting off a record number of competitors. I think we had 10 other companies in that category, which was a first. And of course, we held a virtual BBA, as David mentioned, for the very first and hopefully the last time, which was another opportunity to show the best of British, including our virtual technology and a dollop of creativity and the ambassador's usual jokes. Oh, sorry, I don't mean the usual old jokes, just hasten to add. We hope to put on an event later in the year to give those nominees the opportunity to tell our members more about their emerging technologies. And we hope many of them will take us up on that offer. I could mention a couple of other highlights. There was the lecture by Paul Stein, the Chief Technology Officer of Rolls Royce, who told us about his company's plans for a carbon neutral future. And picking up on what David just said about cybersecurity, we also had a good talk from Carter McLaughlin of Nihon Cyber Defence on measures that we should all think about in our daily business lives. So following also the success of the Pechicucha event, techs in the city, we hope to collaborate again with Mark Dyson next spring to hold another event using his format. That's about it of the highlights, Graham.
Your area, Richard, interacts with the other task forces quite a lot, doesn't it? I mean, you know, these are themes that are applicable, responsible business and diversity and inclusion. One of the things that impressed me about the sector is how it's kept going and sort of, it's kept its purpose and its mission. What do you think the story is there?
Adaptability, I think. I think Britain is very good at, as I just mentioned, adapting, being creative and finding solutions. And if we just look at the BCCJ itself, how it's adapted to digitize. itself, how it's adapted to digitise very quickly with the help of Sam and the Office. 19th of March was that first webinar. And we've had lots of interesting events since then, including Not at the Pub event, which I think was a first and had Sam on on the edge of his seat for most of the evening. But we could do that again. We're very good, I think, as Brits at adapting. And we have a lot of creative technologies and, of course, creative arts as well. And yeah, you're right, Graham, it does cut across a lot of other topics as well. So Paul Stein, for example, cut across the environment agenda too.
Yeah. We've got some questions coming in. Catherine O'Connell wants to ask, I think this one I should direct to Sven and possibly Sarah, if you're able to speak on cognitive bias and what that means and what might be in an event that we do around that. Sven, are you able to answer that? Or do you want Sarah to?
No, no, Graham, actually, I can. It's quite funny, because I just, I was just about to hit the the send button of my answer. So I could also just read it out, but that would be boring. I'll add a little bit. So, so yeah, we also think this is a great topic. It's it's something where when we first heard about it, we thought this is this is the right thing to be doing, because so much about about this is, I mean, sorry, if I made backtrack a bit. I think one of our big aims is to make it more about how people interact with diversity, inclusion. So much more from the outside perspective, rather than from the inside perspective of as a as an LGBT person, this is how I see it. It's more from the outside. So this is why this has been something that we really care about. We we are talking to some people about it. The idea is that we first do the training ourselves. So so we also get a better understanding of how it works, what the principles are, and then also to better understand how you can put together an event that could really work. So so may that be then with another guest speaker, may it be in a seminar setting. And we are also working together with the British Council on that, because they do have actually the resources in-house to also facilitate these things. So it's it's still very much work in progress, but the work is progressing.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's interest in the topic, so we should push forward with that. Catherine makes another great point, actually, on the ANZ Chamber, their tech innovation, education and research. We've done a couple of things this year on education. I think bringing together technology and education might be something that the tech task force will be a really significant project. There's so much to do there. And in fact, we've already been talking to one group about Japan, the internationalisation of Japan's university sector. So Catherine, there are things afoot there. But we would be delighted to talk to the ANZ CCJ about their committees and what they're doing in that space. I can't, at the moment, we're running a little bit over time. And perhaps we ought to think about moving to the networking session. But maybe I can throw an open question to David and the task force members. Something we haven't talked about particularly are the Olympics and the Power Alliance and the Paralympics. Let's be positive. Let's think that they're going to go ahead. Maybe they're going to go ahead in a restricted form in terms of visitors being able to attend. But the sport should be great, and there still should be some good things we can do there. David, what are your thoughts around Japan's next great sporting festival next year?
I think it's a tremendous opportunity for, you know, Japan to show their, you know, their resilience and their ability to host an event. It seems from all the comments made by, you know, the government, national government and Tokyo Metropolitan Government, that they do want to go ahead with the event, that they cannot foresee circumstances where they would cancel the event. So clearly, it's going to be a different kind of Olympics. But I think that's where Japan can shine in showing it's got this ability to be resilient. It's got the ability to to welcome the world. Whether that can be people actually coming in, you know, as spectators, or it's just the athletes. But certainly, I'm sure they'll be welcoming the world in terms of television coverage. And, you know, we will see some fantastic games. Of course, first of all, the Olympics, and then after that, the Paralympics. And we've been very clear that I think certainly the BCCJ, but all of our partners in the Power Alliance, that supporting Paralympic sport in particular, well, supporting sport is a great thing because of the values, but I think particularly there's really powerful message in terms of supporting the the Paralympics. Yeah, London back in 2012, I think, really laid down a marker, you know, for how, you know, dedicated the Paralympics, the Paralympians are, the Paralympics and the quality of the sport, you know, that they're putting on on this on this great stage. So I think the event, you know, I'm very hopeful the event will go ahead. Certainly, the BCCJ wants to be part of this. I know many of our partner chambers want to be part of this. And I hope the all our members will be fully behind supporting it. And we're particularly looking forward to supporting the Paralympics.
I'm sure they will, David. I mean, when we hosted Andrew Parsons, who's the head of the Paralympics Committee on August 24th this year, it's exactly one year ahead of the August 24, 2021, when the Games will, the Paralympics will start. He was absolutely clear that the Games will go ahead in a restricted form. And I think that means restricted to the peripheral activities around it, rather than there's not going to be any change in the sporting content. But also, he and his colleagues at the Paralympics were absolutely brilliant in suggesting that they really want the involvement of chambers and business and support. And it just seems to me that there's going to be some really exciting opportunities to get involved. And hopefully, we can bring members into the whole Olympics and Paralympic spirit and and activities. That's something very much that we'll do, I think.
And Graham, as Andrew said, two things that bind Japan and the UK together, business and sport, particularly Paralympic sport.
Right. We are now almost at quarter to seven. So what I'd like to do is hand over to Sam, who is going to tell you what we're going to do next, which is some networking opportunities. So Sam, can I hand over to you and you take it from there? Now, I'm going to ask David to close the event. David, there was one question which I'm sure you're going to want to answer. Phil Robertson asked about any comments on the appointment of our new ambassador, Julia Longbottom, well known to everybody from the chamber. I believe she's coming in March or April. We're saying farewell to Paul Madden in January, and then later in the year, Julia will join. If you could perhaps address that and give your closing remarks. David?
You meet it, David.
Sorry, I think that's apparently that's the the most used business term in the world in 2020. You are on mute. So now I hope you can all hear me again. Yeah, Phil, thanks very much for that question. And Graham, thanks very much for the for the opportunity to respond to it. I think it's tremendously positive that Julia Longbottom has been appointed as the next ambassador from the UK to Japan. I think there's a number of long-term Tokyo residents, Japan residents who are on this call, who will know Julia from her time, her last tenure, four-year tenure that she spent at the embassy here in Tokyo, when she was effectively, I think, the number two in the embassy, serving as the minister. So she's an incredibly experienced diplomat. She comes in, I think, at a very exciting time. You know, when we have a new comprehensive economic partnership agreement, the Olympics are coming up. There are many, many positive stories. Ambassador Madden has been absolutely tremendous. And I certainly know he has been very encouraging and speaking on behalf of the embassy to say, you know, the embassy and of course, with that, the Department of Industry and Trade are very keen to continue working closely with the business community here, including the BCCJ as a representative of business. And I think it'll be a fantastic handover. I'm very much looking forward to having the chance through the BCCJ to working with Julia. And I hope that, you know, all the members on this call as well, through BCCJ events, are looking forward to the chance to interact, you know, well, not only to interact with the ambassador, but to to meet and continue to interact with her team at the embassy in the year ahead. So so with that, I did mention a couple of things about it being a positive year going forward. We've talked about the Olympics and Paralympics. There is the the new comprehensive economic partnership agreement comes into force next year. And although so much of what we said this evening has talked about BCCJ in the virtual environment, we are continually monitoring the situation. Clearly, around the entire world, I think, you know, with winter coming on, more people spending more time together inside, there are increasing cases of Covid, including here in Japan. But we're very much looking forward to the chance to start running face-to-face events. Our key priority is always to keep our members safe. But I hope you will have noticed that we will be running our first face-to-face event appropriately socially distanced towards the end of January, which will be, you know, a bittersweet event, because it will be our official farewell to Paul Madden. But I'm sure we persuade him to address the audience. And as we know from his performances at the BBA, he's always a very, very entertaining speaker. So lots to look forward to in terms of events. Certainly, the the virtual platform has been fantastic. And I think probably we've all realised just how much content is out there on the internet and the web now, not just through, you know, the the BCCJ platforms, but other providers. I think for me personally, this has been one of my takeaways from the Covid pandemic, has been the opportunity to do a bit more reading and access some sources, because they're now available online, that I wouldn't normally do. Since we've been talking about our three pillars, one of these is particularly in my mind, and that's the DNI pillar. And I was reading something the other day about a lady, a lady who lived about 650 years ago called Julian of Norwich. I'd never heard of Julian of Norwich, but she was, you know, a religious recluse back in the UK, born in the around about 1340, I think. But she is famous for being the first female author of a book in the English language. Or the first verified book that historians historians can verify in the English language that was verifiable as written by a woman. She was renowned for giving great advice, inspirational advice. And I'd like to sort of end with one quote that resonated with me. You know, I think it was good 650 years ago, and it's still just as applicable today. So as we look forward, looking forward after what has been a very tough year for everyone, looking forward and trying to be positive about things happening next year for business, the Olympics. In the words of Julian of Norwich, and sorry, Julian back then apparently was also a female's name as well. In the words of Julian of Norwich in her book, "All shall be well, all shall be well, and all manner of things shall be well." So I think we take that with us as we look forward positively, realistically, but positively about the year to come. I look forward to the opportunity of interacting with you all on BCCJ platforms. Hopefully, we'll soon get back to face-to-face. But in the meantime, have a very Merry Christmas, a very happy New Year, that I think I hope will be the start of the year ahead, that is happy, prosperous, but most importantly, very healthy for you and all your friends, colleagues and families. So thank you for being here this evening. Take care, and we look forward to seeing you next year. Good night.